Welcome, regular session mayor and city council meetings, six P M. Wednesday, March fifth, twenty twenty five, City Hall Complex, Council Chambers. Called this meeting to order. Would you please rise for a pledge of allegiance? Mr. Doyle, do us the honor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Pennsylvania, one nation, under God, indivinuals for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I want to let everybody know besides council mayor, we have our attorney on Zoom, Mr. Allen. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have a, what's your last name, sir?
Quist.
Quiz.
Q U I S T.
Thank you, sir, just for the record. We do have a call to the public. Edgardo Muñoz, please come to the podium, state your name and address, please. Three minutes.
Thank you, council members. Very quick, I'm here to in representation of the O Street Movement in Santa Cruz County Public Meeting, Public Media, and I'm here to cordially invite you to a grand opening for a new space in Morley Avenue. I don't know, you have seen a sign as a space that will be dedicated to youth, community, music, and art. And so we are, our grand opening is March the twentieth at six o'clock, and let me pass you very quick. So like I say, it's a beautiful new space in Morley Avenue, you know, it's part of the Morley Art District also, that we want to dedicate it to our youth over community, a space that will definitely will develop creativity, you know, among our youth and their families, and also a space where community can gather, but basically for arts and music. I also want to take the moment to invite you also our, our four edition of the Nogales Corner Marathon to be celebrated on April twenty sixth, and we would love to have you also there and, and do the El Banderazo de Salida, like every year we have been doing it, we appreciate all your help and that you bring, bring, give us, and also I'm very glad to see other collaborators here like South thirty two for their support also want to thank you and invite all the entire community to those two, these two beautiful events. So please write it up in your calendars, March twenty is the grand opening of GOC is the name of the Disney building, a space for youth, community, music, and art, and April twenty sixth, the Nogales Corner Marathon in Gelfair. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, next we have Jose Pimienta. Please come up, sir. State your name and address. Three minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmen and Women. I'm here just to take a couple of seconds out of your time to discuss Stone Garden because it's an issue that affects most of our officers here in Nogales. Let me clarify some myths first about Stone Garden. When it comes to Stone Garden, the only thing that we get from Border Patrol is our assignments. We do not follow under their chain of command. Our chain of command is the city of Nogales, our uniforms are blue, and we follow our sergeants, lieutenants, and our chief when it comes to making decisions. Secondly, we're not acting as Border Patrol agents. Let me clarify again, we are not acting as Border Patrol agents. If we apprehend someone or we stop someone, we bring in the experts who are Border Patrol. They're the ones who study the immigration laws, and therefore they make the determination whether unlawful entry or legal entry is made into our country. The third thing that I'd like to harp on is Stone Garden funds are one hundred percent refundable to the city. So that means that the city goes ahead and pays out ahead, and then they get reimbursed for whatever they had spent to pay us. So it is one hundred percent refundable. It does not cost the city anything. The, the last thing that I want to mention about Stone Garden is Stone Garden funds pay for vehicles and much needed equipment, which now means that the city doesn't have to take it out of the budget, and now has more money that they can use and program to other projects that are deemed more important or a priority. So I know this issue is going to come up later on tonight. I'm asking everybody if they could help us officers by voting yes on that initiative and letting it pass. This moment, I'd like to thank every one of you in advance for your votes on it, and thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Sister Tracy Horan, S P. Three minutes, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Sister Tracy Haran, and I'm with the Kino Border Initiative. We're on North Terrace Avenue in Nogales. I'm a Sister of Providence, and I've been with the Kino Border Initiative for six years now, and as some of you might be familiar with the work that we do, we're a bi-national Catholic organization, and our office is, is right there just near the Deacon Ceni Port of Entry, and our focus is on migration with dignity. So as members of the Catholic community here in Southern Arizona, we have a long tradition of paying special attention to the people who are the most vulnerable. Many popes have reminded us of Matthew twenty five, that some of you might know, I was a stranger and you welcomed me. Pope Benedict also invited us to consider the contributions of immigrants in our communities and remember that they are our neighbors. So the way that we love our neighbor immigrants reflects the way that we love God. So as the council considers Operation Stone Garden, I'm reminded of Yessenia, some of you might have heard in the news, she was a woman recently detained by police in Tucson. She was with her six and nine-year-old children, and they were selling empanadas at a gas station when a woman verbally attacked her based solely on her appearance, and then called the police even though she wasn't breaking any law. So the police not having any reason to take her into custody then contacted Border Patrol, and they deported them to Southern Mexico. And the result of that was that Yessenia's other two children were then separated from their mother. So I think a lot about the Yessenias in our own community who could be affected if Nogales' police are asked to focus some of their capacity on stopping or detaining immigrants. And we at Kino, we've had a good working relationship with Border Patrol and the officials at the port, and we know that Border Patrol has actually questioned their own use of time to stop and detain people who previously haven't been a priority like Yessenia was just recently. Another thing I want to mention is a big part of our mission is also education, so we welcome about forty immersion groups per year down to Nogales, high school, college students, parishioners, they come from all over the U.S. In twenty twenty four, there are around five hundred of them, and they participate in experiences, they shop at Safeway and Food City, and they visit the restaurants here in town, and so, you know, it's great to hear the students say, I really thought that people said the border was dangerous, but then they come and they have these experiences, they meet people from Nogales, and they're like, wow, this is such a welcoming, safe place, and that's the message that they take back to their, their towns in Cleveland and St. Louis, Miami, Seattle, all of the places that they're from. So we at KBI were concerned that pushing through the work with Stone Garden could change the experience of welcome for some of the people that are coming if they're from diverse backgrounds and they're worried about being stopped and asked for their papers. So for the sake of migrants who work and live in our communities and visitors who come to learn about and experience Nogales, we at KBI would ask the council to say no to renew this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sir Eileen McKenzie. Please come up, state your name and address.
Thank you, I'm Sister Eileen McKenzie, and I'm also at eighty-one North Terrace. I'm with Kino Border Initiative. Thank you very much for your time and your attention and your service, actually. So I'm a Franciscan Sister of Perpetual Adoration, and I've been working with Kino for about a year and a half now, and as Sister Tracy has just mentioned, we promote Nogales to groups from all over the United States. I highlight the safety because parents are really concerned about their children coming to the border, and, and parishes are concerned, there's, there's a lot of fear that's involved with this, so I highlight the safety when people come here. I'm the daughter of a law enforcement officer, and I'm happy to share that all of my interactions with police officers here in Nogales have left me feeling both safe and respected, and I promote that as well. So thank you all for your service. I remember my dad used to tell me when I was really little, he would say, if you ever have a problem, or if you ever get scared, go to a police officer because they will help you, if you see that uniform, they're going to help you. And I believed him, I still believe him because that's been my experience. Because of this experience, it's highlighted for me a truth that in order for police officers to work effectively in a community, the people that they're protecting need to trust them. My big concern with Operation Stone Garden is that people are afraid now to call police officers because there's a blur in the authority. The overlap of this authority between local police officers and federal immigration officials, although, which might not be the case, you know, legally, but in the minds of people, that blur is creating a lot of fear and confusion, particularly in Latino communities. The Latino citizens that I know here in Arizona, citizens, are afraid to call local law enforcement because they're afraid to jeopardize the status of others in their family or maybe in their neighborhoods. So that means that people who need the help of police officers are afraid to call them when they need to and when they should need to. Women are being beaten by their partners, and they're afraid to call the police. People are being robbed, and they're afraid to call the police. Operation Stone Garden does little to build trust between the people of Nogales and their police officers. I also question the need for this to continue in light of the federal enforcement we see along the border. Both in Mexico and the United States, we have increased military personnel, the number of CBP encounters has drastically decreased, it's at an all-time low right now, and the Pentagon just announced they're going to be sending three thousand additional troops in addition to the nine thousand two hundred that they've already deployed. Now, I certainly understand there's a financial issue involved with this, and I respect that, but in renewing this program, I hope that we also consider the moral and logistical perspectives. I would hope that alternative avenues would be pursued for funding a very important service in this community. I want to continue to promote Nogales to visitors and tour groups here with pride. I want our Nogales community members to feel like they can turn to police officers when they need trust and protection, and therefore I ask you not to renew the grant. Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we move to Mr. Jerry Smith. State your name and address, please.
My name is Jerry Smith, my address, six fifty-six West Mesa Ferry Drive in Nogales, and it's appropriate that today is Ash Wednesday, I'm a Catholic, and we know that the global champion of migrants is Pope Francis, so, but he's unavailable to talk to us tonight, but he did write a letter to the American bishops, Catholic bishops, several weeks ago, two hundred and fifty of them, talking about the rights of migrants, and the response from the Vice President was that the bishops are getting money to settle refugees, and you know, they're just entered for the money, which is really not true at all. But because Pope Francis wasn't available, I was lucky enough to find two Catholic nuns to come and talk to you tonight. So there's a moral perspective to this. The main thing is, we need our community to respect and trust the police, and Nogales is ninety-six percent Latino, and I don't know how many are here illegally, but I'm sure there are some, and if, if they're the victim of a crime, you know, they're going to be afraid to contact the police. If they witness a crime, they don't want to participate because they could get thrown out. On my last job, my family came here in the sixties, I went to college and worked in L.A. My last job, there were seven hundred social workers in my building. My mother was a teacher here in Nogales, her teaching career was fifty years, and she was ninety-three years old, so I came home to Nogales, and I knew there weren't any jobs, but all I needed was one job, I got one job at the Holy Cross Hospital, and then I got a job at, at the dialysis clinic, and I met the mayor's parents and his brother. His brother lived in L.A., but he would often visit, and he would, all three of them would get dialysis. So this is a very important service to Nogales, and I want to give an example of what can go wrong. There's a patient there that was here legally, he worked in a restaurant for many years, he qualified for Social Security and Medicare, and he was on dialysis, and he told me he had never gone to school, he went to the D M B to take a driver's test, and he flunked it twice because he was illiterate in Spanish and in English, you know? So his idea was he had to learn English, and I said, no, it'd be better if you could learn Spanish, but he walked to work, but he, he did drive, he got an old car, and he said that he had to drive to dialysis, but he would drive carefully. But all it would take would be a taillight that was out, and he'd get stopped by the police, he doesn't speak English, and there'd be a big bust, and the Border Patrol would say, oh, let's get, you know, send this guy, you know, his family in L.A. did get an attorney for him, and it was a fake attorney, so his, his situation was never rectified, but he, he worked, he earned Social Security when he was here illegally, and he's old and frail, and, you know, things like this happen, and we, and I think if, if, you know, policemen have a duty to protect us, and immigration has a, has a separate duty, so I think if the policemen really want to, you know, do that, you know, they could become immigration officers, and there's a lot of overtime available for them, too. I know that they do it to help their families, but there's a, there's a financial point, my understanding is that there's no money available for the increased pensions, and so that's something the city should, should think about, you know? And, you know, we all know there's a need to make as much money as possible for our families, but I think this is something that the city council should vote against renewing because we need, we need to have support from the community and trust in our police officers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No, no more call to the public? Okay, thank you. Next, we move to number four presentations. Number one, Hermosa Project Update. Mr. Pat, register. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate the time today, and to be able to come give you an update on the Hermosa Project. I think it's been, I think almost two years since we've actually given an update, it's been a while. I do want to offer, and we've talked with city manager and others about making this a little more frequent as things start to pick up, and so part of the update today, I will get you caught up on a lot of what's happened over the last year and a half or so, and then hopefully going forward, we can continue to provide updates as things start to really pick up with the project. So I want to just circle back and remind everyone what the project is. So we have a manganese and a zinc deposit seven miles south of Patagonia, I think most of you know where we're located. The zinc deposit is in construction, so last February, we made a commitment to invest two point two billion dollars over the next three years to build the project and get the zinc deposit into production. We also have a manganese deposit. It's the only advanced mine development project in the United States that will produce two critical minerals off the federal government's critical minerals list. What that means, it's a list of forty minerals the federal government maintains where we're highly reliant on foreign sources, so we don't produce it domestically, which they consider a national security risk. In the case of manganese, what nearly all of the battery-grade manganese in the world comes from China, and we only produce about six percent of the zinc in the world, all comes from one mine in Alaska that has five years left, so we are on the cusp of being one hundred percent dependent on foreign sources of zinc as well. We'll produce byproducts of silver and lead, but the one thing that is new on this slide since the last update, we've been conducting exploration, we've got a emerging copper deposit adjacent to the zinc deposit that we're studying that could potentially be developed through the zinc mine that's already in construction, and obviously if we think about the clean energy transition, revitalization of infrastructure, both copper and zinc are going to be in significant short supply globally, so it's a very strategic deposit for the country. It is one of the largest undeveloped zinc resources in the world, the only one really close to it, it's in a very remote area of Iran, so unlikely to be developed, so it really is, as I said, a strategic resource. The manganese deposit, it would be the only fully integrated source of manganese in North America, which would go into lithium ion batteries. As I said, the zinc deposit is in construction, the manganese deposit is still in a study phase, we've not made the decision yet to mine the manganese deposit, it's in a pre-feasibility study, we're doing fieldwork and testing, which I'll talk about in a minute. The last thing, we have forty-five thousand acres of mining claims around the two known deposits where we've been conducting exploration for additional mineral resources, that's where the copper discovery comes in, we call it peak, we've also got a couple of other prospects for additional zinc. So we're really, what we're developing here is a critical minerals district, there are two known deposits, but there's lots of additional potential for critical minerals in and around it for a potential life of up to seventy years. We talk about four pillars to what we're doing, energy security being the first one, so both the last administration and the current administration very focused on creating domestic supply chains for critical minerals that are essential, and obviously that's what this does, two of the more problematic supply chains we have with dependence on geopolitical foes. We are trying to do this in a way that sets a new standard for how we think about sustainability in a mining context. So we'll disturb about ninety-five percent less land than a typical open pit copper mine, we'll use about ninety percent less water than a typical mining operation, we have a pathway for this to be the first net zero mining operation, so net zero greenhouse gas emissions from the operation, and I'll talk in a minute about the socioeconomic opportunity and uplift for the community, and I'll focus specifically on what we expect to happen here in Nogales. I'm going to spend a bit of time on this slide, so this is where I'll primarily give the updates on what's happening now, what we can expect the rest of this year, and then over the next two years. So as I said, in February last year, we committed to spend two point two billion dollars, we already invested about four hundred million at that point, so it's about a two point six billion dollar investment. If you draw a line at the south end of Phoenix, it's the largest private investment in the history of the southern half of the state, and potentially if we decide to mine the manganese, there would be additional investment on top of that. So there's two primary things going on at the site, we're sinking two shafts, which are just vertical shafts to access the zinc deposit underground, so twenty-five foot diameter, three thousand feet deep, that will continue into next year, we're driving a decline, which is essentially like an angled tunnel to access the manganese deposit underground. We already have between six and seven hundred people working on construction at the site. By July, that will ramp up to a thousand people. We are requiring any specialist expertise and contractors working on construction have to live in Santa Cruz County, so between now and the end of the year, we expect probably another four hundred coming into the county. The shaft and, and decline development goes through the end of next year, we will start underground infrastructure development towards the tail end of this calendar year, and then in April, we'll start construction on the surface facilities at the site, that's what ramps up the construction workforce from six hundred to about a thousand. So that's the zinc processing facility, all the surface infrastructure that supports the underground mine. We've been producing a battery-grade manganese product in a pilot plant in a laboratory for about a year now for testing, so we have sixteen different companies in the lithium ion battery supply chain that are testing the manganese product for purity to make sure it works in their batteries. This year, they're seeking higher volumes for testing, so we're going to scale that up and build a larger test plant. Again, it'll still be in a laboratory setting, nothing actually going on in the field or at the site around that. I think the really exciting part locally, we have committed to at least eighty percent of our long-term permanent workforce will be existing residents of Santa Cruz County, so to maximize the social and economic benefits of the project, we need to have a local workforce, and so that's going to require a lot of training and workforce development over the next three or four years. Those programs will start later this year, I've got a slide, I'll talk about that a bit more. And then lastly, our remote operating center, we announced in April of last year that we will build that in Nogales, and I'll talk about that a bit more, that's a really important one for jobs. As we go into twenty twenty-six, we will have a, a, a decision on federal permitting, so the project is fully permitted for construction and operations, so we can build the project, ramp up to full production, and operate for a very extended period. On the state permits, we've been granted on the private lands, there is a federal permitting process that the Forest Service is running that will conclude the middle of next year for some ancillary infrastructure around the, the project. The draft environmental impact statement will come out in May, and there'll be public meetings in late May for that process. First zinc production will happen in the first half of calendar year two thousand twenty-seven, long-term, between eight and nine hundred permanent jobs, South thirty-two jobs, and I'll talk a bit more about that in a minute. I want to talk a little bit about Centro, I think everybody may be aware, the site we've selected is on the west end of Mariposa Road, at the intersection of Mariposa Road and Loma Mariposa Road, we will start construction in April-May timeframe, so it's an underground mine, all of the primary production processes will either be fully autonomous or remotely operated, so we won't have people underground on equipment for the production process, it will be remotely operated from this facility, so we are going to be building this operations center, which is essentially like an office but with a lot of technology in it, and from that facility, our, our teams can monitor equipment running underground autonomously, as you can see in the picture there, they can remotely operate equipment that's running underground, and more than two hundred people in our workforce will actually work at this facility here in Nogales rather than reporting to the mine. The reason that's important is it's a key enabler for a local workforce, so with the use of that technology, if you're going to go underground and operate a piece of equipment, you have to have years and years of mining experience. These jobs with the technology we have, we can train someone with no mining experience in eighteen months to do the roles, and with this facility in the community, close to schools, close to families, close to childcare, then we believe we can obviously train and draw from a broader portion of the workforce, and we expect to have many more employees in the workforce that historically maybe would not have gone into mining, and these are higher tech skills, they're transferable skills, a lot of digital technology, automation, things that aren't just mining skills that are transferable to other industries. So a lot of the training programs over the next two years are going to start to prepare the workforce for, for these types of roles. This is a little bit of an artist rendition of what we expect it to look like, the design of the facility, Centro, is still ongoing, so this will evolve over time, but this is probably something we'll be able to update you on, we're very excited about this. In most of the rest of the industry, when they build these remote operating centers, they put them in a big city, you can put them anywhere, you could operate this mine from anywhere in the world, and they tend to put them in big cities where they can more easily draw workforce, you know, where there's more population. This is a very unique model of putting it in Nogales, and the main reason for that is so we have a local workforce, and we maximize the social benefits of the project. So talking about workforce development, we have probably doubled our permanent workforce in the last year, we now have two hundred South thirty-two. in the last year, we now have two hundred South 32 employees, that will be steadily ramping up to, as I said, between eight and nine hundred over the next three or four years. To give you an idea, we've hired sixty-five people since January first, so that's ramping up quite quickly. We are, we have a workforce development task force in the county that has representation from all of the local school districts, the Santa Cruz Center, Pima Community College, U of A, local workforce development organizations, and others, local government that are working on designing the programs. The first, our objective here is we want to train people that are residents of Santa Cruz County in Santa Cruz County to do these jobs, so we don't want to send people to Tucson to learn a skill or a trade, we want to set these programs up here. So we're working on an MOU at the Santa Cruz Center, Pima already provides a lot of the curriculum and capacity for these programs, so the first program will roll out in September, it's an electrical electrician program that will be through the Santa Cruz Center here in Nogales, but obviously supported by the Pima Community College. The reason we're starting with electrical skills is they're the longest lead time, it takes the longest to train them, we will roll off excessive programs after that where there's less, it takes less time to train people. So that'll be a very exciting milestone where we start to train people in the local community. The other thing we're doing, we obviously are buying a lot of equipment to go underground, a lot of high-tech equipment, mining equipment, those are provided by global vendors that provide the specialist equipment, so regardless of where this equipment comes from, we are requiring those vendors to set up their support and maintenance facilities in Santa Cruz County as well, and they're also required to develop their own apprenticeship and training programs for local people. So when I talk about indirect jobs and the flow-on economic benefits in a minute, that's a good example where there'll be jobs created that are not working for South 32, but they would not be jobs, there would be jobs that would not exist in the county if it weren't for the development, and that's a contractual requirement we're making for all of our major equipment providers, again, to maximize job opportunities. So I talked about eight to nine hundred direct jobs, we've had Ernst &amp; Young, one of the accounting firms, do an economic impact analysis based on the latest information and how the development will roll out, even though it's eight or nine hundred direct jobs, if you add the indirect and induced jobs, it's almost twenty-four hundred. The indirect, an example of an indirect job is a job created in the county by a vendor supplier or service provider that relocates here and employs people to support our needs, and so mining equipment vendors as an example, so the vendor that will provide our underground mining equipment will have a facility in the county and they will employ people, and so when you add up all of that, it's closer to twenty-four hundred jobs in the county, almost thirty-five hundred in Arizona. Our average wage excluding benefits will be about $90,000 a year, and as I said, by the time we're at full production, in about four or five years' time, we want at least eighty percent of that workforce to be people that live in, now in Santa Cruz County. The other economic impacts of this, these are annual figures, so it will generate about $200 million of additional labor income in the county, to put that into context, this will be about twenty percent of the total payroll in the county, about one point, almost $1.2 billion in total economic output. So something else we're doing to maximize the positive economic output, we talked about direct jobs with South 32, indirect jobs where they, our vendors and suppliers employ local people. The other thing we're doing is starting some initiatives, there was an announcement made on this today, to maximize our use of local businesses, so increasing the opportunities for local businesses to supply services or goods with us. So we will have targets for how much of our annual spend is local, and by local, we mean Santa Cruz County, so local businesses, locally owned entrepreneurs. So we're working with the Nogales Santa Cruz County Chamber, I think we announced a partnership today. It's not easy to do business with a big company like ours, so part of the role of the Chamber will be to help us, help local businesses create the capacity and be able to do business with South 32, and also to understand what businesses are out there that maybe aren't doing business with this that could. Obviously, that creates more economic benefits, the more goods and services they provide, the more people they hire as well, so we'll have a local procurement target and a local procurement plan to help local businesses prepare to do business with us. Lastly, on taxes, about $26 million a year in Santa Cruz County, to put that into context, the total property tax intake in the county now is about fourteen million, so it's a pretty substantial, fourteen million, yeah. One of the things, two of the things, we started really early, so we've been working on the project for almost six years now since South 32 acquired it. We set up the Hermosa Community Fund in the early days, it's a nonprofit that does disbursements a couple of times a year, it funds only Santa Cruz County nonprofits, and we've now funded one hundred and twenty-one different nonprofits in the county, over a million dollars. The other thing we started about five or six years ago were the STEM programs in the local schools, so we have robotics program, we have Techno Lo Chicas, which is a STEM program for middle school students, and so we've invested about a million and a half dollars. Obviously, we talked about workforce development, it will be important for us to support education more broadly, to make sure that the STEM and other skills that are needed are thriving in the county. Last slide, and then I'm happy to take questions, we are doing public tours the first Friday of every month, so we do encourage people to come out and look. One of the things, I won't go into a lot of detail on this, but one of the things the city is involved in is we're negotiating a community protection and benefits agreement, it is, they also call these good neighbor agreements, so it's between the city of Nogales, Santa Cruz County, town of Patagonia, and South 32. It's a process that's been ongoing for about a year, we're still progressing that, there's going to be listening sessions, one here in Nogales and one in Patagonia on March seventeenth and eighteenth, to get input from the community around concerns and interests that they think should go into this agreement, and so I want to just take the opportunity to encourage everyone to come out and share their thoughts. The purpose of this is, it'll be a legally binding agreement that commits South 32 to social investment in the community long-term, and also additional environmental and other protections above and beyond what permits require, so additional steps we might take. We also have a community advisory panel that's been refreshed recently, that has residents from all over the county, where we socialize, get input, and that's a really good entity to help us understand the concerns of the community, but also to share information and soundboard, and there's a number of people from both Nogales, Rio Rico, and across the community involved in that. If you want more information, we have this dedicated website, we've got social media channels, jobs, job information is posted here, careers.south32.net, and if you have a more specific question, we've got a website that we monitor to answer questions. With that, I'll pause and happy to take any questions you might have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pat, council has any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Doh.
I'm a little curious on that figure of fourteen million, what does that entail? What part of the county tax is that?
So the project will generate $26 million a year in new taxes in the county? I was just trying to compare that to the total intake that Santa Cruz County has now for property tax, so on an annual basis, the county collects fourteen million, about fourteen million dollars a year on property tax, yeah, so that gives you a sense of the significance of twenty-six million a year of new tax that would be collected.
I think it's, it's almost double.
Right.
Oh, something else came to my mind, I'm sorry, it's just the money that we lost, and I was figuring in a ten-year thing, it looked like we were losing anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent of, of the actual, just something, that has nothing to do with your figure, but thank you for letting me know, or us know, that that's actual all the property tax that's collected on a yearly basis, so that is a significant difference of property tax, and I, thank you.
Yeah, in the early years of the mine, it will nearly double the property tax intake in the county, and, you know, fifty-eight, almost sixty percent of that goes to schools, and then there's county services and other things.
One more question, how long down the road before that would be generated?
So that revenue starts at first production, so post early 2027, yeah, so probably 2028's the first year you start to get to numbers like that, yeah.
Thank you, Chris, we're going to need it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mendez.
I just, I comment, you being a great sponsor for the Cultural Arts Committee for all the events, thank you.
Welcome.
Councilwoman Bonilla.
Mr. Reisner, I really hope that our citizens and the citizens of Santa Cruz County really take advantage of the future employment for the mine. I thank you for investing in this community also, I just have one question, and it's maybe most of us here won't see that, but do you have an exit plan when Hermosa 32, I don't know if it's at fifty or sixty years, or whatever time you are here, you do have an exit plan for the mine?
Yes, that's a very good question, thank you for that. So right now, if we mine both deposits, the life of the operation is almost seventy years, but what we're required to do when we do the studies before we even start construction is do a closure plan for the site, so we were able to understand what the site would look like in seventy years, once the mine is fully, once the deposits are fully mined out and exhausted, and then we do basically a rehabilitation and reclamation plan, so we would take down all the structures, dispose of those, regrade the site, re-topsoil the site, revegetate the site, and then monitor it, and so that plan is done, that plan was done during the feasibility study before we finished the project. We also are required with our state permits to post financial assurance that would cover reclamation of any facility constructed should we go bankrupt or something like that, but we absolutely have a plan for how we would reclaim and rehabilitate the site, even if it's seventy years out, yeah.
One more question, have you begun to, I guess, pump up the 6.4 million daily gallons already, is that, is that not yet?
So we're not, we're not reaching that level yet, so what we are doing to sink those shafts and access the deposit underground, there is some very poor quality groundwater around the deposit that we've got to move away, so that we can safely sink the shafts and the water doesn't come in. So last August, we started a program which was permitted through the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, so this is water that's got high natural metal content, high selenium, high sulfates and things like that, we move it away from the deposit, we run it through a state-of-the-art water treatment plant that we built last year that's permitted through the state, we treat it to an Arizona Surface Water Quality Standard, and then right now, we're putting it into Hershaw Creek, so putting it back into the environment. So we're not using that water, we're treating it to a Surface Water Quality Standard and putting it back into a different part of the watershed, we're not, we're permitted to go up to 4,500 gallons a minute, we're not even half of that right now, it's about fifteen hundred, so it's about, it's about a third of that number you quoted.
Okay, so is this groundwater or is this surface water?
It's groundwater that's naturally occurring around the deposit, and because, because the Patagonia Mountains are heavily mineralized, the reason there's mines there is there's naturally occurring metal, the water has lots of metals in it, and so what we're doing is treating that water, taking the metals out, putting it back into the environment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Montiel.
Hi, Pat.
Hi.
Well, I know that I've been following up for the last few years, and I know there's a lot of controversy too, I know you give out a lot of money, thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, and I know that, like Mrs. Lopez says here, that it's used to support a lot of her events, their events, schools and so forth, but I'm also following up on the other side of the controversy, and that's, you know, the environment. And I'm not an expert, I'm not a scientist at all, as you know, but that, I've been reading a lot about it, and it is concerning for me, but I'll leave that alone because I know that there's just so much that we can talk about, and, but I did want to make sure that you know that as a council member, representing the city of Nogales, I'm concerned about the environment, and I'm also concerned about when you, we won't be here anymore, but our grandchildren will be here, and what the effects of the mine will be on many, many generations ahead. I have a question about this community protection, I know, is that the attorney behind you? I think that's the city attorney. It is, okay, I wanted, I never, I don't know much about the community protection and benefit agreement, other than what I've seen on social media, and I don't know, I know as a council member, I didn't know much about it, I wasn't involved in developing it, I went back, and I know it hasn't been, you know, formally approved here, but when you said legally binding, you know, my ears just, you know, because when we talk about legally binding, it just naturally, I'm concerned, and the reason I'm concerned is because I haven't seen it, I don't want to be committed to something that is especially legally binding. So our attorney is behind you, and I wanted to ask the attorney if he knew, or if the legal has seen this document and studied this document, along with the city manager.
Could I clarify what I meant by legally binding, because it's legally binding of South 32, every commitment in the agreement will be things we're committing to do?
Okay.
So it will be, none of the municipalities are committing to do anything.
Okay.
The reason the municipalities are at the table is so their interest and concerns are covered by the agreement, and so every commitment in the agreement will be a commitment we're making, either to invest in something in the community, education, infrastructure, social programs, whatever, or additional environmental monitoring studies, actions, so the negotiation that's ongoing, and it's still very early days, there's nothing on paper yet around commitments, the reason these listening sessions are important, trying to get input for the community on what should be in it.
Yeah.
And so every commitment in the agreement that has yet to be written will be a commitment we make, above and beyond any requirement. So the reason this is important is the city of Nogales's voice needs to be in the room, the council and leadership of the city need to make sure that what you would like additional investment in is on the table for those commitments, any concerns you have, whether it's environmental concerns or others, are into the room so that they're captured by the agreement. So that's the reason we typically call it a good neighbor agreement, because it's additional commitments the company developing the project is making to be a good neighbor, whether it's investment or protection, so I just wanted to clarify, when I said legally binding, I meant for us.
Yeah, and I checked out the document, and it does say legally binding, so maybe that's just the terminology for me, it was like, I don't know why they would use that, legally binding, but, so my question would be to Mr. Kramer, if in the future, if we could just be more, at least as a council, we represent the city of Nogales residents, and I know that this, for example, it's important that El Centro, for example, is going to be built, has the city, you know, talked about the infrastructure, the traffic, all of that, a study has to be made, because it's going to impact the community, the residents, we have to weigh out both, you know, both sides of this, so that's one question to you, it's not a question, but just throwing it out there, in the future, we need to start looking at this, and then also, just so that the community protection benefit agreement, if we could just keep informed about it before anything is binding, but I understand, Pat, that it's not binding, but just so that the attorneys from the city can be talking to you and us about that, okay, thank you.
Certainly, thank, excuse me, yes, thank you, I have been meeting, not going to, because the mayor goes to those meetings, those three, two to four-hour meetings, but thanks to Garrett, he set up meetings, I believe with Renee as well, so I've been meeting one-on-one with them on behalf of the city, and mainly about El Centro, and how that Centro and how that impacts the city. We brought up traffic. We certainly brought up my concerns about the energy, what, how that could, the energy sector could be impacted as well. So the things that are concerning for Nogales is more what I'm talking about, because we, Pat and I have had this conversation four or five months ago, even before I got here, certainly. And then, of course, the training programs, how that's going to impact Nogales as well. I haven't brought up about how much sales tax is going to be impacted, but certainly that will be a conversation, because we don't rely on property tax. So the property tax really doesn't mean much to us in Nogales. It's the sales tax. So that's another part of the conversations we'll certainly have. I know the mayor attends those meetings, but it's more general for all parties. But I thank you for setting the meetings up, because I'm having the one-on-one meetings strictly about Nogales, certainly about those concerns. And if any of you do have concerns, certainly bring them to me, because when we do have our every-two-weeks meetings, it's certainly important to go from there. And I'm sure that we'll add that in, because we're still, I know it's still being worked on, so we'll certainly bring that in. But thank you, Councilwoman Montiel.
Good. Shada.
All right. I'd just like to make a kind of suggestion or recommendation that would probably help down the road, lessen some of the fears maybe of any water contamination, because the Santa Cruz River is the closest proximity, and that we draw water, the city draws water from the Santa Cruz. So just if they could, if they could kind of touch base on that and let us know how protected our water source is in the Santa Cruz River would help, I think, any kind of future fears that might surface. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to, if we want to make this update on some frequency, one of the things we could do is if the council has something in particular you want to focus on and just talk about that, we can do that. We can give general updates, or at times, if you want to focus on one really key issue, happy to do that as well. We can bring more information.
Yeah, council, we, this is our first one, and like Pat said, it's been, it's been two years. I brought, I said, let's start doing this, and certainly we can change that schedule, and I'm sure you're willing to come every month if need be. And certainly when we get El Centro going, that's what I told them, it'd probably be a monthly, just an update of where we're going. And certainly, again, we want to keep each and every one of you appraised of what's going on, so we know that we have a good working relationship with South 32.
Yeah, whatever frequency works for you and however you want to structure the topics, we're happy to do that.
Mr. Bonilla.
Mr. Reisner, is, how much is South 32 involved? I know for a fact that the water that's being pumped out right now, you said it's, it's being pumped out and released through Harshaw Creek, right? Eventually, that will end up at Patagonia Lake, am I correct?
So Harshaw Creek ends up in Sonoyta Creek, ends up in Patagonia Lake. But we, so we did a lot of hydrologic modeling before we started this program, and we're actually monitoring what's actually happening now. And what that showed is it never even makes it to Patagonia. It actually reinfiltrates the aquifer if you go down Harshaw Creek, and that's what we're seeing. It's not, it has not made it even to Patagonia yet. One of the things I will say is, we had some community input from the community advisory panel that I mentioned about three years ago, where they wanted to look at different ways of managing that water rather than just putting it in Harshaw Creek. Is there a way to recharge different parts of the aquifer and keep the water up in the Patagonia Mountains rather than sending it down Harshaw Creek? So like targeted aquifer recharge. So they suggested a technology called rapid infiltration basins, which are used all over the country to do exactly that. So we chose to go ahead and put rapid infiltration basins into the federal permitting process that's running based on that community input. So when that concludes, the middle of next year, we'll have an opportunity to not put all the water in Harshaw Creek and actually target the reinjection into the aquifer up in the mountains. And about two-thirds of, of the water from the program could go into those facilities, which would not go down Harshaw Creek.
So my follow-up question is, and I guess it's a, it's a good plan, would Arizona Department of Water Resources or Arizona Department of Environmental Resources, would they, would they check the quality of this water that's going to, would they be involved in this or?
Yeah, so the, the program has a surface water discharge permit from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, as well as an aquifer protection permit from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Both of those require monitoring of the discharged water for quality. We're monitoring monthly now, and so that's provided to the state, and that becomes public record, so anybody can, can see those results. Yeah.
Thank you. And just, you know, in general, all these meetings have been, you know, done and open to, you know, what is the city going to need? What is, you know, the town of Patagonia? What is the county going to need? You know, it's, it's a working collaboration of, you know, looking forward to this great investment, you know, what are, you know, I know they're going above and beyond on the environment, you know, like you said, they're treating the water and then, you know, throwing it back into the aquifer and all that. Safety has been also a thing, you know, where all that is on the meetings where we're talking, you know, what are we going to need? You know, what's going to happen with, you know, where are their trucks going to go through? What, you know, what is our police force? What is our fire, firemen need to be, to be qualified and what equipment we need, you know, if one of our trucks, you know, turns over or what, you know, contaminations. I know EPA and ADQ, everybody's involved. You know, we're just trying to make an agreement between everybody, like they say, make sure we dot all i's and cross all t's and make it, make it functional for everybody. You know, Pat, thank you for doing this presentation. Just keep us informed on, you know, when you have the workforce, how, how can the city help you? How could the city support this, this, you know, with a work training? You know, do you need support on announcing, you know, last thing we needed, hey, they opened this and nobody knew about it? You know, how can we support, maybe, maybe Mr. Kramer included in our, in our webpage and something like that, you know? You know, where will people be having to, you know, register and all that for the schools, the trainings, and what is needed, you know? You know, cost, is it going to have a cost and, and all that times? But whatever it is, I think, you know, education, I know you've been working with all schools, you know, you know, right, 135 and everybody trying to, to look forward into getting, you know, even Patagonia, you know, welding classes, you know, electronics, everything. All that, all that's going to be best for, for all our future students and to be, you know, on a, an uprising and up to date on what is needed for the, for the mine. So, you know, just keep us, you know, in mind, we've been talking about housing, you know, housing is something that, that it's going, it's a need, you know? I've been talking to them, I've been talking with Unidos USA, we're looking at doing a program of a thousand houses in, around the city and the county, not just in the city. So, you know, this is, you know, Supervisor Davis, you know, has been participating, and thank you for coming, Mr. Davis. And, you know, it's something that not, they're not going to do it alone, we're not going to do it alone, the county's not going to do it alone, Patagonia, the town of Patagonia can't do it alone, we got to all work together. So I think, you know, thank you, Pat, and South 32 for, for, you know, this opportunity for, for the city. I, I think communication and, and basically, you know, fill in the blank and get all answers answered with, with the public. I think this project in general is going to be best for the whole city, county, and the town of Patagonia. Thank you. Any other questions or vice mayor?
Mr. Reisner, you mentioned that there was an 18-months training course. Is that, is that for all the applicants or just special skills? And are you going to be using local community colleges or schools for the, for those, for those trainings?
Yeah, so the, the skills that require the longest, like the electrical program, that's sort of a three-to-four-year program, that's why we're starting this year. The 18 months is for the people that will work in Centro, that are actually operate, remotely operating equipment or monitoring autonomous equipment, like the operators that will work in that facility, which will be quite a few of the jobs. So they're replacing someone that might sit on a piece of equipment underground normally and operated. Instead, they're remotely operating it from Centro. That's the skill we can train in 18 months with no experience to do it. And so that gives us a really great chance of having a local workforce, because people in Santa Cruz County that have never worked in mining can learn to do that in a year and a half and work at Centro. All of the training will be delivered through the Santa Cruz Center in Nogales. Like I said, we don't, we don't want to train, we don't have to send people to Tucson or Pima County to train. So we will be setting up the programs in the county to do it here through the Santa Cruz Center. But as you know, the capacity and curriculum and things like that is backed up by Pima Community College, but it will be delivered here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Pat, thank you, sir.
Just last thing, we just opened a new office right next, almost next door to you here, over here at the Yuma Bank Building, so that'll be our office in Nogales until Centro is built. So if anybody ever has any questions, member of the community, that's why that's there, please stop by and see us.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Next, we, we move to city manager's report. Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mayor.
Before anything.
Well, yeah, no.
Your big announcement on the women.
Oh, well.
Please.
You're stealing my thunder. That's at the end. Anyway, nevertheless, all right. First of all, I want to introduce a couple of new employees to the Nogales family, and they'll be working right under me. Of course, David Calvillo, you've all met him because he's right out front, so each and every one of you have met him. He is going to be, he's the executive to the city manager. He is going to work, because we are going to start working with X, of course, formerly known as Twitter for everyone that, Instagram and LinkedIn, as well as overseeing all of our programs, working with IT and everything that we're doing in public relations that we haven't been doing. And all the programs that we talked about, he certainly is going to be overseeing it, as well as anything and everything else. He's been doing a great job so far in the two weeks, and thank you, David. He's a graduate of Nogales High School of 2004, correct? Yes. So good, thank you, David, for coming in. Welcome. And then a next gentleman, he's a familiar face of Nogales, obviously. He retired after 30 years, and Nogales born and raised, I think you even said you're from that Lincoln side of town, correct? Nogalitos. Yes, so Leo, please stand up. Yes, he's a retired firefighter from, yes. And he is taking over the position that was created and much to what the unions were pushing for, for the safety risk management type position, which I, we created through, I know that's not our attorney, but certainly through the attorney's office. He is housed over there, he said, we are doing some changes. He is going to be starting his training for OSHA 511, which is a week-long course that he'll be able to then do the inspections. And then he's got, right after that, the following week, he's doing 501 to do the trainings. So with that, he's, he's, he'll be able to do the OSHA inspections and trainings for all staff. That's the whole point of this, is to protect our staff from any further concerns or injuries or anything to that effect. His fire background is working then with the IFC, which is IFC fire codes, and since his background is certainly that, but we are going to update all of our FIPs, which are Facility Emergency Action Plans for each and every building. He'll be doing training for each and every individual of those buildings, including this one, so I hope we have sometimes have a city council here, so you guys will actually be part of that. But he will certainly carry through with this and anything to do with safety and certainly with fire safety. So Leo, thank you very much. I convinced him to come on a retirement, so hopefully he does well. He will. And with that said, there's a few items on here, I'm not going to take, and I didn't even get you lunch, I know, and I said we were going to be done by 7:30. I am so sorry. Nevertheless, I'll get through this quickly. There's a few items you'll see on the agenda, but we are working with Ms. Jessica already, she's only been here a month, and we are going to create by the next, our council meeting, we'll have a cemetery and a facility use policy in place for what we're going, trying to do, and certainly that's important. We already approved the dog situations, and we're going to start, and that's again with Jessica, because all parks will have dog stations with our little doggy bags. So we are going to provide, if we just pass the ordinance, we need to provide doggy bags, correct? So we're going to do that. As you saw, again, Jessica, this is your realm, the trees are being trimmed in our city park, which is, looks really nice. They're going to make those trees even better. I am working on with, we're going to get our signs for the air breaks, because air breaks, now we can post those signs throughout, and we work with ADOT with that, because we're probably going to put them on grand in Mariposa. So that, that is a, and I think Santa Cruz County passed that last fall, if I remember right, so in the city, we just passed that last fall as well. So we will get that going. We are working with chief, police chief, he is, we already went to the armory, we are, he's already moving things over there, he's moving vehicles in the back. That will be our 911 center in the future, along with, and correct me if I'm wrong, the detectives, we are going to move in, correct? We're talking about it. Nevertheless, we are going to use that facility, and the backend will use that as our warehouse, which again, that's what we're needed, asset control, which I told you about, we're certainly going in that direction. The bank building, we've already done a brief walkthrough, not this Friday, but the following Friday, the company that we are hired, we're going to hire, is going to help get this up to speed, so we hopefully move in there with our business office and IT. So hopefully that will be by the end of this year. And you've already allocated that budget, so that budget is good. I already told them that, I told them 1.7, which I know it's not, it's a little higher, but I told them 1.7 because you know how that goes. But that's our goal, to get over there and make our changes, what we're trying to do in that. John Webster, he did do the walkarounds, I'm going to talk with him Friday, that's for all of our security cameras. So that will be in place, hopefully we're working on a grant with that. Some of the higher-risk places, we may use money to try to get that in place right away. I'm chatting with him on Friday. I am also working with, and I just reached out to our law firm, and they responded back to me, Steve Coleman, and he gave me a couple of names for where we can start looking at creating annuities for our staff, retirement plans for our staff. Both, I don't know if county does that for their employees, but certainly the school districts have that in place, so why not? We have that in place as well. As soon as we get more information, of course, I'll bring it back to council. And with that said, that's it. I'm not going to talk anymore. I've talked enough. Pardon? Pardon? I didn't. Oh, yes. Yeah, you can, that'd be our full investment, right there. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next week, we go to discussion items, action items. One, discussion possible action of in-kind support submitted by the mayor's office for an event to be held at Coro Park City Hall on Wednesday, April 16th, 2025, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Ms. Councilwoman Montiel.
Yeah, this, fellow council members, this is just in-kind asking for $144. The mayor and I are, are organ, we did it last year, we're organizing the egg hunt. And it was a big success last year. We predict that it's going to be twice as big this year, and we are asking for $144 of in-kind, just what you have in the sheet in front of you, just basically it's security. Thank you.
Motion?
Second motion.
Okay. Who made the motion?
Anita.
Anna, Ms. Alindas, second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Seven, zero. There you go. Consideration possible action of action item 2025-3, discussion and possible action of mayor and council on updates to the city vehicle policy clarifying its applications to all public officers, employees, and city-owned or controlled vehicles, including tractors, trailers, and heavy equipment. or controlled vehicles, including tractors, trailers and heavy equipment. In the discussion? Do you have an explanation on this, sir?
Oh, you just keep going. That's good. Remember, we already discussed this for about two hours.
All right, all, all in favor? Aye. Motion by Mr. Work Vice Mayor and second by Ms. Melendez.
And Mayor, this is a tie into that. This is a follow-up, a good quickly. This is one of our programs, it's called Sensera, and it's monitoring all of our fleet vehicles. Each and every vehicle that has a GPS on there can be following in this program. You as a council approve this program. Correct me when I'm, where is my IT? When did we approve, get this, how many years ago? Three, four? Two? Thirty thousand a year. So with that said, we need to implement this program. Well, as you can see, which one now? This is, you're going to have to show me on this one. All right. There's how many times we've traveled this globe with our fleet last year. Sixteen times, lot of miles. And with that said, that shows how many hours it can get into everything and anything regarding with this program. That's just something there. As you can see, we can try, each department director can see where their vehicles are at, at any given time. If we want to get into more in-depth with it, they can see their schedules, they can create a schedule, they can see where they're going from one park to the next park or whatever they're going. They can monitor that person where they're, where they're stopping. You'll see it on there. That's the trip assignments that you can put down for each and every vehicle, if you want. So then you can see if they actually diverted from that trip, if they were driving around or whatever, to that effect. Safety overview, that's where Leo will come into this place, because we certainly want to start putting all of our little bumps and whatever accident-type things, possibly anything else, will be in this program, on this side of the program. So we'll keep each and every driver, each department will be able to put this in. There's the compliance dashboard, the same thing. And you can see each and everywhere if they're complying, what are they doing on the side driving? Did they divert? Did they go off? Did they idle? Anything to that effect. Here's the training. Did they all get their training? Are they all doing their defensive driving every two years, which is a requirement in all other places? And that's something that obviously we're going to implement. And as I told Leo, we have Southwest Risk has those training programs readily available for free. Hey, one good thing, right? We don't have to pay for that. Driving distance, again, we can find out exactly where they're driving, if you want to put in their fuel usage and their fuel efficiency. This is the, let's see, right over says idling. That was for those hours, eight hundred and twenty-seven hours or twenty-seven gallons of idling. Now, how do we, that's quite a bit of waste if you look at it. So that's obviously by the directors, they're going to have to get in there. By the way, this does not infer on police or our fire departments. They are not following this protocol on any of this. They won't be assigned any of that. We won't have to follow that, if they choose so. And again, you can see where it goes with that. And that's the slides. I just, I was grabbing some snapshots from that program, but that program will be implemented along with this policy. So congratulations, council. You will have a policy and a program that we will be implementing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to financial monthly report. Ms. Jean, financial report for January twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you, you have your January twenty-five report. As it was requested last month, they wanted it up on the screen so everybody can see it. So now, everybody's going to say, see the same thing up on the screen that mayor and council see every month. And first off, Mr. Kramer, I put acting city manager, sorry. I'm good at numbers, not titles. There's a difference.
Thank you, Jean.
So your first table is Table A, and that is our general fund. We are in January at month seven. So our monthly budget, if it goes right on track, should be at fifty-eight point three three percent. So if you would turn to your Table A, our revenues through January were nineteen million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand and seventy-two dollars, which is actually seventy-one percent. And our expenses, as you can see there, were seventeen million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is forty-seven percent. Also on this chart, you will see our shared revenue. Our shared revenue, we have brought in five million, eight hundred and forty-one, forty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars, which is fifty-nine percent. Now, if you move on to Table B, this is our sales tax that we have collected. If you look at January, we have brought in a total of one million, four hundred and five thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. Remember, this is the amount that is deposited during the month of January. Does not necessarily mean that was spent. It depends on when it falls. We were short from January of last year by a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, but we are still seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars over our budgeted amount.
Is that the tenth, ten million? Is that what I see?
Yes. So in total, we've brought in ten million, thirty-three thousand and three dollars.
Okay.
So far. If you move on to Table C, this is our general fund split by department. The ones that are in blue are the ones that are over the fifty-eight point three three percent. We still have the very large beginning of the year expenses that are one time a year. So a lot of the departments either have a large expense at the beginning or something that has been encumbered for the entire year. And that's what will push up your budget percentage. As we get closer to the end of year, those go down because it equals out. If you move on to Table D, this is our HERF and our overweight fees. For HERF, we have brought in one million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, which is seventy percent of the budget. We have brought in for overweight fees, one hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars, which is sixty percent of the budgeted amount. For expenses, for HERF, we have expended out two million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is fifty-six percent of the budget. And we have not expended out anything yet for overweight fees. Our next slide is Slide E, which is the sewer. That scared me. For sewer, we have brought in two million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars, which is seventy percent. And expended out one million, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is forty-four percent.
I'll just interject, council, we had talked about the, what we were going to implement. And Mr. Estes has that information and he is working on that for a threshold that we talked about, I believe, in our December meeting. So I just want to add that, that's a sidebar from what Ms. Monmon is presenting. But just so you know, he is working on that, and we'll bring it back to council.
Our next table is Table F, and that's water. So we have brought in two million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is sixty-four percent of our budget. And we have expended out two million, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is fifty-eight percent. And the final table is Table G. We have brought in one million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars, which is sixty-three percent. And we have expended out one million, seven hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars, which is forty-four percent. Are there any questions on those tables?
Any questions? Go ahead, Jean.
Okay. So the last page that you guys have is our business licenses. So we have two thousand, eight hundred and ninety, two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight active business licenses as of the end of February. We had no canceled or suspended licenses during February. We had ten new licenses issued, and we still have fifty-one that are in the hopper waiting for some sort of inspection to be done. For January fuel report, we had a total of twelve thousand, eight hundred and, no, I'm sorry, twelve million, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, no, that is a comma. Let me put my glasses on. Okay. Twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five point six three five gallons of fuel used. And a year before in January, it was eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven point three three eight gallons. And that is both unleaded and diesel fuel. Payouts for February, we had two. We had one in fire. It was four hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents in vacation hours. And for streets, we had one that was four thousand, eighty-four dollars and sixty-five cents in vacation hours. Any questions on that?
Nope. Continue, please.
The final one you have is the water and sewer, which is on the back of the physical report I gave you. It was not available last week yet. So we have six thousand, one hundred and fourteen active utility accounts. We have sixty-nine active contracts, which was an increase from last month of thirteen contracts. And we have, it's their total of seventy-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine. This is actually a good thing if our contracts are going up, because that means more people that owe us money are contracting with us. With our sewer accounts in Viaverde, we have a hundred and forty-one delinquent accounts. It decreased twenty-four from last month. And the total is three hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. We have submitted all accounts that are over a thousand dollars to legal. So that is now in legal's hands as to how they want to start to reach out to those accounts that are over a thousand dollars.
Councilwoman Montiel?
So Jean, so legal is doing a great job in trying to reach to these people that owe the city in Nogales, right?
We're sure hoping, yes.
Yeah, that's good news.
Yeah, we'll work with Mr. Estes and the rest of the legal team to make sure that either, however they're going to reach out to them, reach out. And a lot of them are tenants. So you can't, like you mentioned last month, you can't put a lien on a home that belongs to somebody that's not there. So that's a big issue.
That's, that's the, the elephant in the room, yeah.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Kramer, just so you can tell, Mr. Estes, I know he's not here, but the other attorney is. I really commend Mr. Estes. I know that he's, he's just filling in, but he's doing a great job in, in, in addressing this issue that we're having, that money's, funds that are owed to the city. So I, behalf of the council and myself, I really want to thank him. Because it's a lot of work, I know that. It's been going on for many, many years. And so he's addressing it, and that's a great step.
It certainly is. And I think that by discussing it, we've actually decreased, because Ms. Monmon didn't say that a few people have already started reaching out.
They have.
Because they heard the council is talking about it. So that's a good thing. So that certainly, and he certainly, again, like I said, he's going to come back so we have something in policy too, how it's going to be implemented for that thousand-dollar threshold. So thank, certainly working. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Anybody other questions? Go ahead.
Jean, how's the audit coming around?
So our, we're on the final two bits with the audit. So within this next month, it should be completed.
Yeah.
We should be good to go.
Yeah, because if you recall, last year, that was a red flag that we didn't have it ready.
Yes.
So when we're getting ready to talk about budgets, it, I, as you know, I don't want to go back and harp on it. But it's important, if we're going to be thinking about how we're going to spend and allocate thousands, millions of dollars, we need to have an audit to see, you know, how we did in the past, so we can correct it and move forward.
Yes.
So I know that in one of the, the auditors had mentioned that we needed to finish the audit the end of this February, so it's been the end. And so the time, I could say that we're going to receive it maybe next, the next few weeks from the auditors. I know we get copies.
So when you, when you guys get the copies, it already goes through the underwriters. And so
Yes.
Once they get done with our information and it goes to the underwriters, we don't know how long that part takes.
Okay.
So they could have, the underwriters could have it for a week, they could have it for a couple of weeks.
Usually it takes two, two weeks after the underwriters, okay. And then my next question, put my glasses like you, I can't see. Where are we with the rate study?
With the utility rates?
Yeah, the utility rate study. I know that's been an ongoing dialogue.
It has been an ongoing thing. And I know that they were trying to kind of finalize some of the numbers. I know we mentioned a few months ago that there is still one litigation that's out there. And I know it was tabled last month, the discussion of it, it was supposed to be an executive and it was tabled. So that one might, it, it's not a big one. It shouldn't have too much concern over it. But we always have to worry about if we raise our rates and we have a litigation out there, how does that affect?
It's an attorney question, but.
Exactly. And I know Mr. Estes isn't here, and he's the one that's kind of working with the, Will Dan, the company doing the rate study on that portion.
Okay, that's good. And then, I put my glasses again. Have you heard anything about, do we have a lot of federal grants through the city in Nogales?
Yes, we do.
Okay, have you heard? Have you gotten any updates on any potential changes or impact?
So far, every federal grant we have has not been affected. We have not received any word from anybody that says that, you know, we're in jeopardy of any of our federal grants due to a lot of the things that are going on. So as of right now, our federal grants have already, the ones that have already been awarded to us, we know are coming in for next year. The rest of them are still in the process. But we have not heard either way, like if, if anything bad is going to happen. And we were told, we went to a grants workshop with Senator Kelly's office two weeks ago. And they told us to continue to do things as we should. Don't stop or hesitate because of what could be happening. We need to continue to move forward and plan as if everything is coming in.
But you haven't received anything in writing from the feds
No.
about any potential?
No, nothing's saying.
Okay, good. That's good to hear. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Montiel?
Jean, are, are employees trained to provide all the information for the auditors? Did they finish their training already? Because the issue for the last audit was that the auditors prepared everything. So it, it, it's like, you know, taking a test and grading it yourself. So that's, that's the optics that, that came off on that.
Right. So dealing with that, and I'm glad you asked that question. Rather than hire a third party, which is what was one of the recommendations last year, we're actually working with our auditors. And so they're in the process of helping us learn exactly how to read what they send back to us so that we can do that part together. That will probably end up being a year or two process. Because if we're going to do it, we need to make sure we do it right. Because I don't want to do it and then give it to them, and then they give us another red flag that we did it wrong. So in working with them, we're learning from them how it needs to be done correctly so that we can do it correctly on our side.
Also, Jean, the water rate study, it, it is kind of a, it is one of those issues that, that I'm very concerned because the, the budget's coming up. And there were a lot of projects that were not, we were not completed from the WIFA. There was thirty-two projects, and I think we got done four or five of them only out of the thirty-two projects. So we need to really put everything in order as far as water, sanitation and sewer that we address if, how we are charging our, our customers. Because if we don't do that, we, we can't go back to the federal government and ask for more WIFA money.
Correct.
So we need, so that, that's, that's my own concern that it's been, I know it's been held up in, in litigation, but we are heading almost into our budget talks. So I, I hope that we can, we can resolve this issue with, with litigation next month so that we can almost fall back into this whole WIFA issues and the water rate conversation, all that study. And also, will we, at one point, when we do the, the, the budget talks, at what point are we going to discuss the employee, the workers' comp study also? That's, that's finished already. Am I correct?
So that was done between HR and Mr. Kramer? So I can't really answer any question about that.
Is that done already, Mr. Kramer? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, Jean? Go ahead, Mr. Doyle. Anybody else, Jean? Uh, go ahead, Mr. Doe.
Uh, on these audits, uh, that you're working closer with the auditors, are they gonna, are they, are you basically following the same guidelines of past years? Or are they gonna look at it in a different light or ask different questions, uh, as far as the audit report or the auditing goes?
So every year, they ask different questions. Um, it all depends on who from the auditor's firm they assign to us. If it's somebody we've had for a while, if it's somebody new, when new people come in, they always ask us new questions. So last year, we had a whole new team come in. Um, I think as you guys remember, we had one auditor speak to you first, and then we had a second auditor speak to us the second time, because they changed our principles. So it all depends on who is there, what kind of questions to ask, and every year, they should ask us different questions, and they should go down different alleys, because if they continue to do the same thing, well then.
It's not an audit.
Exactly. So I've learned a lot in the three years I've been doing the audits from them. And, um, so that's a continual, every year, the entire finance team just learns so much more from them to make it easier for us to complete what they need.
So will, will we have a preview of the audit before they come and talk to us, or I think last time they did?
So Jean is our principal, and, um, she will come and talk to you guys when, after it goes through the underwriters, and it's ready to come to you guys. She will come down here from Phoenix and stand here and talk to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Jean. Uh, thank you. Next week, uh, nothing on order, and so we go liquor license. Consideration and possible action of liquor license twenty twenty-five dash two application for special event liquor license application submitted by Herman. M, Mr. Herman Salaya for the Boys and Girls Club, uh, of Santa Cruz County.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed? Did you get it? Thank you. Uh, number two, consideration and possible action of liquor license twenty twenty-five, the street application for special event liquor license application submitted by Mr. Jose Iguera for the Public Safety Global Alliance, Inc.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, on the post? You want discussion, sir? Go ahead.
I'm, 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 I don't understand why Mr. Herman applied for both licenses.
No?
What do you mean? It's right here, it says.
No. Sir. Yeah, and the other one's Herman Salaya.
It says, Mr. Herman Salaya submitted to the state department of liquor license for the Public Safety Global Alliance. Who is the public safety? Why is it involved across?
Sir, you got? It's Mr. Herman Salaya and Mr. Jose Iguera. Two different names, sir.
Well, why did I get this paper? It says here, Mr. Herman Salaya has submitted to the state of Arizona Department of Liquor License Control.
Is that, that started the agenda?
For the Public Safety Global Alliance. So is he involved with both of them or what?
No.
Well then, what is this?
I don't know what you got.
Well then, here, please pass it to me. Why do you use that?
This is not part of the agenda, sir.
No, that's the one that says that he's involved with both.
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
Who is the public, uh?
The Public Safety Global Alliance is, is, is part of the, it's a nonprofit that is participating in the ma- Inter Alcalde's, uh, Mayor, uh, Summit.
Yeah, with both names on this.
One, sorry, sorry, Mr. Doe, but, you know, I don't know where you got that paper, but my agenda doesn't have it. So I'm not sure.
Don't give us mistakes.
I don't know where, where you got this.
What do you have right here?
Must, hold on.
In the agenda?
Yeah.
So that's why I'm.
Yeah. Clarification, Mr. Doe? It, yeah.
They're not involved with law enforcement, right?
No. You know.
All right, that was my question. I don't like to.
Mr. Jose Iguera is one of our firemen. Uh, okay. Well, I'm just telling you where he works, but he's. No, 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 two different, two different, uh, entities. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, okay, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So both, you know, on number one, it was Mr. Herman Salaya for the Boys and Girls Club, just to clarify, from, of Santa Cruz County. On item number two was, uh, Mr. Jose Iguera, uh, for Public Safety Global Alliance, which is, uh, supporting the Inter Mayor's, uh, summit in late, late March.
So that was a typographical area then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you for bringing it up. So with that said, uh, all in favor? Aye. On the post? Motion passed. Uh, item number ten, orders, consideration and possible action of order twenty twenty-five dash zero two dash zero zero five. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, approving a sub-grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for the Stone Garden grant in the amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand in reimbursement over time and mileage. Go ahead.
Boy, you got a motion in second already?
Yeah, so I had a motion. Uh, Ms. Melendez, who's second? Thank you. Uh, discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Montiel.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of things to say. Um, I know that, just to make it clear, uh, this order is just to approve the amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand for, uh, overtime and mileage, um, because I've been getting, uh, questions about, uh, the part where the cars and mid, and, and our purchase, Mr., this, Mr., um, Kramer. So this, just to make it clear for the audience out there, it's just, uh, we're approving tonight the overtime that we had table for overtime and mileage, right? Okay.
Yeah, that's overtime, mileage, and per diem.
Yeah, just to make it clear. So thank you, Mr. Kramer, because I asked you, um, uh, to clarify exactly how, I'm not an expert in the Stone Garden, specifically, especially on the unfunded liability and how it works, and how the tiers work, tier number one, tier number two, tier number three, all of that. So I talked, uh, thank you for setting me up with a meeting, because I really li- uh, like, Mr. Kramer, um, that when we have questions, you address it, uh, not just with your knowledge, but you get the experts involved, which really makes a world of difference. And I talked to Michael Voskis, and he's an expert in this area, but more so Clark, um, Pa- is it Partridge?
Yes.
And, uh, who you set me up, thank you, and we had a great discussion about differentiating the tiers, tier number one, tier number two, uh, and the tier number three, and how it affects the unfunded liability when the officers use this, uh, these funds for overtime and mileage. And of course, my question, because in the Santa Cruz County and, and, and the, the two ladies that got up here, and there's a lot of people there that, out there that are asking questions about it. So we as public officials should ask, right? We should ask these questions. Certainly, I asked, we can be happy myself, wanted to know exactly how this works. Does our unfunded liability increase when we use the, that portion of the Stone Garden? And which is what we are here today to approve. Um, and so I talked to the experts about it, uh, thanks to Joel, um, and this is what I learned from our conversation. Correct me if I'm wrong, and I know Michael is probably listening to the meeting on YouTube, and, which is great. Uh, so what he said is, um, that these pay increases can increase pension liability. There's no doubt about that. But what he also says is that these increases are generally balanced by the extra contributions made on the additional pay. So they're, they're working extra time, but yet you have to pay more on that extra time they earn. So it's almost like a win-win. I, I don't know if that's the right word, but it balances out, and that kind of makes sense. Um, and because of how our city's plan is set up with the tier one, tier two, and I didn't even understand tier one and tier two. Those are for the more experienced officers that have been here for a long time, because of course, they're, they, they cost more money, right? They've been here, they are burned it, they'd have more time working for the city. And then tier three, of course, are the newer officers. So because of how the city's plan is set up, we know the tier one and tier two that we talked about, the Stone Garden overtime and its impact on the pension, pension should mostly offset with the extra contributions made. So it's an offset, you know? And, and while it won't be, and this is the interesting thing about it, and since you were in the conversation, Joel, i- it's not gonna be an exact match, you know, it's gonna be kind of offset a little bit, it's not the exact amount. Um, the effect on the unfunded liability should be minimal, and I say that again, it should be minimal. Uh, both in the short term of it, and year to year, and the long term, uh, over the lifespan of this unfunded liability, because the city of Nogales, the taxpayers has to fund, um, the retirement for police and fire. We all know that. It's not like you and I, Mr. Kramer, we're, we're retired and the state funds our retirement. Unlike here, uh, the city is the taxpayer, has to fund the retirement of our public officials, uh, public safety officials. And so after talking to Michael, um, I really got a better understanding of it. Because we look at the unfunded liability, and for a year twenty-four, was eight, we're at, uh, tier one and tier two is at eighteen million. That's what we, we are in debt. And, and for the fire department, year twenty-four, we're seventeen million. I also asked Michael, Michael, why is the unfunded liability increasing every year? So in four years from, uh, from year twenty-one to now, tw- year twenty-four, for the police department, it's increased from sixteen million to eighteen million. So this is his rationale, and this is what he said. He said it's because the money, if you remember the bonds the city of Nogales approved, they're, they're going, they're being used, the interests of those bonds are being used, um, to, to pay down the liability. But it's taking some time. And he guarantees that it will pay down the interest, uh, of those bonds that, you know, Santa Cruz County and the city of Nogales sold. Um, the interest gained is pay, is eventually going to pay down the liability, and that was my concern. And the concern of taxpayers. And, and so I feel comfortable approving this, because my interest, like it is the taxpayer out there, and everybody's interest, is that we make sure we have a very healthy retirement program in place for the city of Nogales. Because we, the taxpayers has to fund that retirement for the rest of, of, of officer's, uh, life, you know? And so because the, the state doesn't help, uh, the state has nothing to do with it, it's all generated by the taxpayers. So I, I feel comfortable talking to Michael, he's the expert. I feel comfortable having this conversation, because like I said, it's, it's, it is so, so complicating. Uh, it, there's so many moving parts to this whole unfunded liability. Um, and I know that our friends down, down, up north, um, the sheriff department did, was planning to do away. I, I read the international like many of you, and, and I, I, I had a lot of calls concerned about that. And so I did my due diligence, I looked into it. Um, I wanted to make sure with Michael that the, 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 the interest that we, on the bonds that we borrowed, that we sold, uh, is going to be used to pay down the, the unfunded liability, and he guaranteed that it's going, it's going to be used. So hopefully, in the next few years, we see this unfunded liability decrease and decrease and decrease. So having said that, I also, Mr., I know you're new, and you're overwhelmed, there's so much, but remember, it's a statute. We have to have a plan in place, and please make sure that we update the, the policy, uh, that deals with the pension. And, um, I know it's not your doing, but it hasn't been updated. It should, it's on the website, and the last time, uh, it, it has to be, it says here, adopted pension funding policy annually, and I, I, we haven't done it annually, but it's just good to, to know that. Michael brought it up to my attention, which, uh, I appreciate. Um, so I wanted to make sure I, I explain to people that I also have confidence in the Nogales Police Department, like I do with the Fire Department. Uh, but this, I, I want to make sure that there's two, I do, I don't think they're working in bad faith that they would use this money to go and, um, you know, help Border Patrol in any way, in, in a wrong way. Um, I know our community right now is, I was talking to Ms. Lopez about, we're just kind of walking on eggshells. We, we know people feel unsafe, people, it's unpredictable out there. We don't know what's really going to happen. And, but I really don't feel like they will use this overtime, Stone Garden overtime money to, to, to cause any more anxiety to the citizens of Nogales. Uh, I, I know that, uh, they're good people working for a good cause, and that's to keep us safe. That's the goal. And I think that the Stone Garden money will not, you know, create something that is not in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly, thank you, Ms. Montiel. Yeah, it was a, it was a, it was a good meeting, thanks to Jean, she set that up, and I think Michael and, uh, Mr. Partridge, as they said, they were very, uh, they had to bring their layman's terms as well as they could, because they're, they're nerds, and I was trying to stay with that too as well. It was very, but it was engrossing and it was in-depth, so I'm glad you got that information, because it was important. And certainly, it was important the fact that we could have lost, if we didn't approve this, almost one point five million dollars worth of equipment. And that's, that, that concerned me too as well. Not only the liability, that's certainly important, but if we didn't pass this, it was one point five cars, vehicles, radios, everything to that effect. I asked Mr. Partridge what, you know, not Partridge, excuse me, that is Partridge. Okay. Anyway, I asked him that, and he said it's, it's not a fiscal decision that people are doing it, it's more political. But they are losing, those places that did are losing that as well of their equipment. So I didn't want to see the city of Nogales go through that as well. We couldn't afford that, not at all. So thank you for meeting with.
Um, Mr. Kramer, but tonight, we're just approving.
Right, but if we, th- th- this would have impacted the other one, if we did not. It would impact that.
Today was.
Right, just this, what we're passing, we passed the other one, but if we did not pass this, this would reflect upon that we didn't want it, so they would have, then they, being the feds, would have stepped in and said, okay.
Exactly.
So that's why that, this is hinging upon this too. They're connected.
Okay.
Mr. Bonilla?
It's more of a comment, uh, to the, uh, police chief and, and police officers, to Mr. Pimienta. Uh, so I, I know that the police department will not use this to hunt or chase illegals, but I was thinking the other day that if we have six officers, um, patrolling the city of Nogales, and we have six other patrol, uh, working off Stone Garden. Uh, and so let's say that our police officers that are, are, that are on our payroll, they get stuck on a domestic violence, they have to go to Walmart for someone stealing stuff, and eventually, the six officers will shrink to two for the entire city. Am I correct in assuming that these other six officers that we have working for, under Stone Garden, they will respond if needed, uh, to, to fill other calls in the city? Am I correct? It's, you're not just limited, uh, to working out, uh, stuff from Stone Garden?
Mr. Jimenez, could you please help us?
Comments, and you are correct, but, you know, uh, Stone Garden is very, very complicated. I've been involved with it for about twenty years, and it, I still don't understand the intricates. Um, Mr. Bonillas, uh, you are correct. You used the, the scenario where we have six patrol officers out on the, out on the field, and there's six that are actually working Stone Garden. And it's happened quite a bit, uh, when we have major critical incidents, uh, touching upon like an officer involved in a shooting. We will have, uh, six officers that are working patrol. Obviously, that kind of incident involves all our officers and support staff. And if we have officers that are working Stone Garden, we have an agreement with US Border Patrol, uh, that those officers at that point are released from their Stone Garden, uh, obligations and become, uh, regular patrol officers, while we call in additional support officers that are coming in from other ships. So to answer your question, yes, if that incident is, uh, resolved within a certain timeframe, they do have the opportunity to go back to. they do have the opportunity to go back to Operation Stone Garden. But at that point, our watch commander determines if it's liable for them to stay on shift with us or if it's okay for them to return to their Stone Garden deployment.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Chief, who selects the officers? And what are the requirements for, in the process for this?
Are you referring to working Stone Garden?
Yeah, Stone Garden.
Well, the officers that are approved and allowed to work off duty or on duty overtime have to first be off probation and off their training program. So let's use a scenario where an officer has been with us a year. That officer is already available to work off duty employment and/or on duty overtime. So Border Patrol will send us a daily request that is reoccurring on a daily basis of what officers are going to be working. Like mentioned earlier, they don't tell us, you know, how we're going to be working. It's just that they want us to work a certain area to augment their presence there. So any officer that is able to work overtime, in this case, Stone Garden, it's their choice. They select to work the hours they want to within restrict, within reason because we do restrict the amount of hours they worked, obviously for their wellness and health. We don't want officers working 40, 50 hours of overtime. So the officer, it's their choice. They're not obligated to work, which we do have some officers that don't work any overtime. They're, you know, they have their financial is well for them. But majority officers do use that and do work it. But so there is not, we select them. It's their choice to work it and up to a point how much they work.
And do you have enough officers in that pool that can join that Stone Garden program?
Yes. It is a popular overtime detail that the officers enjoy doing. But understand that sometimes we have other commitments that the city is requiring. Let's say 4th of July. Obviously, we say, you know, the priorities for the city functions to be first taken care of. So we sometimes do suspend our overtime that involves Stone Garden and focus on their city functions. So, you know, yeah, you know, to answer your question, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr.?
I kind of look at it from different lens, I guess. But at the end of it, it does look like a positive thing to have because, like you said, not only augments the duties of BP, but I've seen where BP also augments the local PD whenever they, maybe there's some kind of call that, and they're around, they seem to be like backup. Am I correct?
That is correct, sir.
So really, the, both departments work hand in hand. But what I'm looking at is the money that we're talking about down the line will also be augmented with the mines when they start, when they start bringing in more money into our community. And that'll be something that the city will have more. Like right now, you're talking about losing a million and a half without Stone Garden. That adds up. The other thing, I don't want to be cold or with the people, maybe that are here just trying to make a better life, that are here living and maybe illegally. But what I saw last year when the gates were open was a lot of people coming in that were in better shape than a lot of our National Guard troops. In other words, these guys look paramilitary. They were there on terrace. I went over there, took water. Of course, not all of them were like that, but there was considerably quite a few coming on a daily basis. And so we don't need to be placed in some kind of danger because what I see from our future mine is that they're going to be providing a very important service to national security in a sense. And the best of having also ongoing green with electrical cars. And we don't need any kind of terrorist group to come over here and invade our border when BP can better protect them when they're working hand in hand with our local officers. And I think our local officers know the local crowd better, and they can actually be an asset for, to get even a better treatment from BP. That's the way I see it. I think that working hand in hand, the people that are here illegally will be treated fairly. And the ones that can do danger to our country, hopefully BP will be able to do a better job because they have more manpower out there where it's needed. That's my viewpoint. I don't know, chief, you're in law enforcement. I don't know if that's a correct viewpoint to take, but I believe that that's how it's going to turn out and work out.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
You are correct, Elder Man Doyle. I just want to make this comment to not only yourselves here and the audience here at this meeting, but to the community. The commitment of the Nogales Police Department is to ensure the safety of the community. But we also take into consideration, obviously, the laws, starting with the Constitution, that we're not going to violate anybody's civil rights, illegal or legal. We do have a great partnership with the U.S. Border Patrol and all our federal partners, our state partners and our county partners. So we do work well in hand. And when we do work Stone Garden, the mission that we support is actually a deterrent, as you mentioned. And we do encounter people. We refer them to Border Patrol, and they take over what they're experts in. So we're just basically augmenting their agents that are out on the field. And yes, you made it, you hit it right on the head. We are from the community, and we know the community. And, you know, we know how the community works and how we can work hand in hand with them. I just attended a superintendent's consortium last week, and I spoke to some of the school officials. And they were concerned about raids and arrests happening at schools. And I once again told them, I'm committed to not being involved in that. It won't happen. If it was to happen where they're giving us direction from either federal or state that we take those actions, my first stop would be at Mr. Kramer's door, and we would get legal guidance to see how we could proceed. So just making this comment to not only yourselves here present, but the community. You will not see the Nogales Police Department involved in anything like that, that you see in the news where there's raids and arrests and all that stuff happening. That's not going to happen here.
Thank you, chief. And I do feel safer that our local PD is involved in the process. And I think it can be a positive input to BP. And thank you, guys, for doing the great job. We all do, chief. Thank you for the way you have control of your department. And I like the way you said that if anything out of the ordinary would come up, you would go to the city manager and then with legal. And I think that's the best avenue for anything that you feel is not appropriate. Thanks again for that information.
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Mr. Bonilla.
Chief, just going back a little bit, and I'm not saying that you've been here for a long time, but you have here for quite a while. Back in the 90s, and I heard you make a comment one time that you were at the podium. Back in the days of the SB 1070, and now we have the Prop 314. From what I remember and I've seen myself is that the way you conduct business as police officers, nothing really will change, right?
Correct. We do business as usual. You mentioned SB 1070, and now this new law that it's in litigation at this time. We've been basically doing what is being called Stone Gardens since the inception of the Nogales Police Department. You know, we interact with the community. If there's a question of the citizenship of that person, the experts are called, U.S. Border Patrol. We step away. Business as usual. I know there's been concerns. We're saying that people will not call the police or talk to the police. In my long time here, I've really never seen that because we don't go to any of these calls of service with a concern of their immigration status. We are there to concern ourselves with Arizona state law. If there's something that comes to light, we always defer and refer, but we don't take any enforcement action.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kramer, your head coming?
Thank you, chief, for coming up and answering the questions for council. Certainly is important. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Perara and Ms. Montiel. I know you brought this up, just so you know, because of like all of our policies. Last time it was updated was 2019. So I'll make sure that we get this for you next month so we can get up to date on this, on the pension liability.
Yes.
Nevertheless.
Thank you. And thank you for clarifying that, chief. You know, like you said, almost business as usual, the good type of Nogales PD that we've had and, you know, working relationship with the community citizens and all that. You know, it's not changing nothing because we've been in Stone Garden forever. And, you know, being part of Stone Garden does not change the way you guys handle your business with the community and the citizens and the visitors. So I appreciate your clarifying. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Well, that's it. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Going to considerate, number two, consideration possible action of Order 2025-03-009, an order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing a budget transfer of an amount not to exceed 250,000 from the General Fund Reserve to the Facility Department for the purchase and installation of new fire suppression, I mean, system to be located in the City Hall Building and the Public Works Building through Johnson Controls Fire Protection. Thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
What's the fire suppression?
It's our.
Company.
Fire equipment that needs to be upgraded for all of our buildings. The fact that this building and Public Works is a little over what it needs to be done. Our rest of our buildings will be less than this. We walked over Johnson Controls, your fire alarm systems. And we're going to add smoke detectors and more pole handles to these systems. So all of our buildings will be upgraded and up to date, including Palo Doodle, library, everywhere that we have. We just walked over to the Council of Aging. We're probably going to add some strobes. So all this, again, the walkthroughs that I did, this is where we're starting. So we'll be doing that. The rest of them probably will be no more than total of about maybe 50,000 to 60,000. But these are certainly, as you go look at the horns.
Upgrades.
They're even, almost as old as you, maybe, Mayor. I don't know.
I'm only following you.
Yeah. Nevertheless, that's a good question, though.
So 250,000 is just for the city?
Public Works.
Public Works and City. Yeah, those were the ones that needed the most upgrades. Again, the other buildings, Vice Mayor, is the ones that were going to be less. The Council of Aging, we figured no more than 8,000, but we need to add a few more strobes for them as well. As I walked through there yesterday, as well as getting their evacuation doors. And actually, I know it's digressing, but nevertheless, just so you know what we're doing. So they have an exit pathway on the back door there. So Dr. Montiel and Dr. Verona, who was there yesterday, we were looking at that. So that's all part of this, what we're doing. And certainly, as a council, you certainly want that. It's very important.
So on the other buildings, are you going to be taking it from the fund reserve? Or are we going to wait till the budget comes?
No, we'll go right to the reserve because this is, need is to be done yesterday.
And we're going through a process of getting quotes and all that, different quotes.
Well, through Johnson Controls, we're through, they're through our, like a Mojave type thing, so we can go directly with it. And with safety, you can go directly with that right away. The state allows you to do it because of safety. You can certainly go that route. But if you follow through your Mojave type contracts, you can go directly with that one company. Because that means that they have already been used by other entities. So they're part of that whole group with statewide district, school districts, other county governments. Everybody can use that. So that's a good thing that we're part of that as well.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Go to item 11, Mayor's and Council Report on Current Events. Mr. Bonilla.
Yes, this past February 19th, we had the students of the University of Defense. We had 52 students here from over 23 countries visit the city of Nogales. Mr. Josh Rubin of the Port Authority and Mayor Madonado were the guest speakers. They visited the border, they visited the city hall. And this is the second year that I do this, that we invite the University of Defense here to the city of Nogales.
Thank you. Mr. Doe.
Aside from pending functions that our city council members have provided, I don't have much to say except thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Melendez.
First, I want to say thank you to the city for the in-kind support on the senior event, in particularly Jessica and all your people there at Parks and Rec. They help us with everything. Thank you. And then, on behalf of the food bank, Mr. Kramer, thank you for helping them solve the big problem they have. And I'm working now on the Fiesta de Mayo event. I know it sounds early, but it's, we have to keep working. That's what we pay for. And this is going to be May the 3rd at Caden Park. And the same thing, like every year, it's going to be for free. And it's going to be starting from 5:00 to 11:00. And it's going to be a lot of fun. You are all cordially invited. Thank you.
Councilwoman Montiel? Councilwoman Perah?
Nothing at this time.
Vice Mayor.
February, I think it was the 19th, we met with the Chamber of Commerce. And we're putting together a committee for tourism, for Nogales, to bring more tourism to Nogales. And there's some council members from the city of Nogales Sonora involved in this. There's also a person from Customs in Nogales Sonora. And the first meeting was pretty good. So we're trying to get something going for the city of Nogales to bring more tourism. So hopefully, we'll be meeting many more times in the future so we can bring this to light. That's my.
Thank you. Okay. Can't forget the Buffalo Soldiers. We had a great event here down here in Cordova Park. It's always been something growing and growing every year. I think they do a great job. It's nice to see them come back every year. Again, you know, Parks and Rec, thank you for all the support on that. I want to thank, you know, the VFW, the American Legion and all that in supporting Mr. Doyle. Thank you. You know, then we had Ms. Melendez. You know, the Valentine's Dance was also a big success. And thanks again, Parks and Rec, for all your hospitality at the Rec Center. I had a pleasure of going up to Phoenix for the Kana, Arizona Business Council, which is willing to come down to Nogales and offer opportunities, you know, there, you know, entities, mining, border, produce and everything. On that, we had, thank you, Judy, for helping me with the bags. We took up 100 bags of produce bags with the logo of the city and says with Mrs. Montiel's theme of America feeds, Nogales feeds America. So it was a big success. People were, went wild for them. It was, you know, Mr. Jaime Chimerine donated some of the produce. And it was a great success. I think there were, I think there were like 87 participants and, but they ended up getting all the bags. On February 12th, I went to Nogales Sonora and a Bori license on a meeting, On February 12th, I went to Nogales Sonora, a Borre Lisan meeting, which consists of, you know, US and Mexican intelligence, and Border Patrol, CBP, you know, local police, and Customs, and everything. I think that was a great meeting for me, it was my first one, first time invited, and now I have a lot of better contacts, and, you know, I've been called probably three, four times in between that, you know, with any little details, questions, and all that. But having the, the communication with people, the contacts, makes a big difference. Unfortunately, we're going to have that meeting tomorrow, but the new administration asks us not to mingle with international meetings for the meantime. So I was looking forward to that one. February 14th, I went to the Senior Center, also celebrated Valentine's, great event. Mr. Montiel and Mr. Verona Ramirez doing a great job. I think that's something that, you know, there were over 100 people there, and I was the young one. And let me tell you, I think that is something the city's got to look into. We, I know we support them with the building and all that, but I think, you know, you know, I'm helping them out with produce, trying to get them produce on a weekly basis, I'm trying to get a little delivery thing for them, because, but they fed over 100 people. Plus, they even sent meals to, to the center up in Rio Rico. So they do a great job. Thank you, Sablo, for doing this. University of Defense, I think they, they were very happy like, like last year, and they did, enjoyed their trip. Any other future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, may I steal your thunder now?
Go ahead.
All right. With that said, I presented three, I should say, the nameplates, thank you, right in front of you. It used to say council member for the three women. I said, no, that's not right. We have council men, now they have council women. And it's for, obviously, International Women's Days this Saturday. So ladies, thank you for serving. It's important that you be recognized, along with councilmen, councilwomen.
Thank you. Thank you, release. Any future agenda items? Go ahead, Mr. Bonilla.
I just have a comment that I forgot to make right now. I would like to thank Parks and Rec, because at last moment, I called them in to set up the PA at Karen Park. So thank you, Jessica. Thank you for making time and setting up everything correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just like to let everybody know, Friday, I've got Governor Hobbs coming in early in the morning, and he'll be here throughout the day. And then we got Congressman Cisco Money bringing in 12 new congressmen from, in interior of the country, just looking into Nogales and, and our trade and all that. So I'll be busy on Friday. All right? Anything else? All right, with this said, move to adjourn this meeting?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming in. Thank you.